Could you please rise for the pleasure of the flag? The flag of the United States of America and in due degree of office for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, here is the section of our meeting we're going to recognize and get. The first one I would like to ask on, so I know what I've been talking about. Brian, sorry. I'm really sorry. Brian, I was interested, but he's one of my students, so that's good.
So I think it's great anytime two months in a row we get to recognize outstanding coaches here at Fort Thomas. So Coach Alessandro was voted as the NFHS Coach of the Year for cross country. When I asked him about this award and how many times he's received it, he said it's been two or three. So when you lose track of how many times you've been Coach of the Year, I mean, I think that's a great accomplishment that it's happened that often. Outside of coaching cross country, I think one of the greatest compliments Coach Alessandro has is when you talk to his athletes and you ask them about who he is as a person and what he does. They compliment him not just about how hard that he pushes them when it comes to cross country and running, but also just in general. One talked about how he was going through some injuries and he knew he wasn't going to be probably one of the top three or four runners, but he felt like he invested in him just as if he was the greatest runner on the team. And then after that, he took the extra step to make sure that he felt comfortable with what was happening. So this isn't just a recognition of a great coach, but I think it's also of a great person as well as someone that really cares about the students here in Fort Thomas. So we are proud to be here to recognize Coach Alessandro as the Coach of the Year for cross country.
You know, I usually would say thank you to the board and also high school and the athletic department, which I will, you know, thank you for all the support and everything. But really, I would thank the kids. Without them, we really don't have these awards. It's really their award, not mine. The best part about a word like this is it gives you a little bit more credibility from kids out there. Oh, I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
A couple of quick things, Brian, before you leave.
Yes, stand up here for a few minutes. The thing that I love is, I don't know, I think maybe it was the very next week after you all finished state, you were on Twitter inviting more people to come and join your team, which I love. You know, anybody that doesn't have a team, come, join us. And so that's what we're all about, so I appreciate that. And I also know how long the season is and how you're up early. And when I was a teacher, cross country kids were some of my favorite kids. They're the hardest working, you know, running over hill and dale, and you have a real camaraderie of a team there. So I appreciate that, so congratulations.
I'll let the comments about the slide run.
Thank you. Thank you.
I saw, right around that time you were given the award, I saw a comment, a parent was commenting about the state meet coming up, and an administrator in another district made a comment on Twitter, and I saved it because I knew you were coming this month. And basically said, "The cross country program at HHS is what high school sports are all about, providing an environment for children to be successful," and they are really good, "and creating lifelong relationships between coaches and athletes." So I thought that fit perfect. You do a great job recruiting all the time. I see you online all the time doing that, and you've got a, it's amazing the kids that you get, as young as they are, to go out and run and run and run.
So Brian will be eligible to represent the Commonwealth of Kentucky for the National Coach of the Year. So he goes through a series of competitions and an application process to compete first regionally and then potentially be selected at varying levels throughout the country. So we're super proud. As part of the recognition of being the Coach of the Year for the state, we'd also like to recognize you with a Tradition of Excellence Award. And what we do with this award is, it's an opportunity for us to recognize those who embody that mission of being rich in tradition and focused on the future. And when we look at coaches that perform at such a high level and inspire children, we know that what we do at our school system is focused on academic achievement, student growth, and individual bettering themselves. But the experience outside of the school day is equally important to developing that perseverance and grit and goal setting, and you provide the whole experience. So we want to recognize you with the Tradition of Excellence Award, and we ask for one more round of applause for Brian.
Good job. Congrats.
Congratulations. Good job. Okay, the next speakers I'd like to invite up is Stephanie Pingly and Alicia Lippert. If you would come up here and introduce some of your wonderful children and tell us all about, oh, I'm sorry, he's going to do it. Okay. Other, yeah, otherwise known as the big chickens.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We're excited with the opportunity we have. I want to feel really high in our literacy program and the emphasis that we're putting on at this particular school here. And so, you know, each and every year, we have a particular focus that we have. The past several years, it's been writing. This particular year, we shift our focus to reading and reading literacy. And I've got some students here tonight that are going to talk about some of the things that we've done early on in the school year to put that emphasis and highlight the emphasis that we had on reading and literacy in general. So I'll turn the floor over then and let them kind of share what we've been doing this first quarter.
Okay, we're four-three from Woodville. We just finished writing magazines to show all we know about informational text.
The reason we did this was to get a better understanding of text structures and text features and to wrap up our unit that we just finished of studying text features and text structures. The things that we had to include in our project was five text structures with five paragraphs and eight text features throughout every paragraph. And to follow it off at the end, we had to have five, a five-question quiz with thick and thin questions.
I'm Cameron Malik, and I wrote about the sport of basketball.
I'm Lauren Rolfer, and I wrote about encouraging kids to go outside instead of going inside.
I am Allison Faust, and I wrote about the sport soccer.
My name is Cameron Cole, and I wrote about the Ironman Triathlon.
Now we're talking about our successes. One of the successes I had was organizing my information in a way that it would make sense to the reader.
One of the successes I had was being able to use five text structures throughout my article.
One of my successes was being able to put text features in certain places so it helped me understand the text.
My success was using the text features to make an organized magazine I love to create.
Now we're going to talk about our challenges. One of my challenges were researching and putting them in my own words.
One of my challenges was adding text features throughout the article that would help the reader find my information.
One of my challenges was being able to balance the hard and easy questions in the five-question quiz.
My challenge was finding information that went with specific text structures. The sequence was the hardest.
Now we're going to talk about what we learned about. I learned the importance of text features such as headings. Like this one, it's the heading of fouling, and I talked about what happens when you foul. In basketball, a foul is not really good. Causes the other teams to get points, but they can earn the ball. You get two shots when there's a shooting foul, that means they fouled you when you were shooting. If they didn't foul you when you were shooting the ball, your team gets to take the ball out of bounds. When you do a shooting foul, you get two shots. It means you can get two points. If a player gets more than five fouls, they get fouled out of the rest of the game.
One thing that I learned was the five different text structures, and I learned how to use some new technology on Google Docs. And for example, one of my text structures was positive effect, and it was what effect do screens have on humans? Too much screen time is not good for your eyes. If you spend too much time on screens, your vision might become blurry. The more you spend on any type of screen, the worse your eyesight gets, which can make you start running into things or you could get in a crash while driving. One of the best ways to keep your eyesight clear is to have lots of vitamin A, which can be found in carrots. People could get very bad eyesight.
Something new I learned was new information about the topic of research. I learned about the Ironman Triathlon, how far they run. They run at a distance of 140 miles. The first step is to swim a wild 2.4 miles. Next, you cycle 112 miles. Wow, that is wild. Then a crazy 26-mile long run. That is why some of the world's top athletes compete this, complete this extreme course. Those are the events that consist of the Ironman Marathon.
I learned more about my topic soccer. For example, I learned that it was created in England 1863 and became an Olympic sport in 1904. Soccer is a pretty old sport, created 2,000 years ago. That was a long time ago. It was created in England 1863. Body soccer was invented in England 1860s. When rugby was detached from soccer, soccer became an Olympic sport in 1904. It was first played by a national team in 1948.
Hi, I'm Jack, and I'm a kindergartener from Woodville.
What are you going to share about?
I'm going to share about the book vending machine that we have at Woodville.
How can you get this out of the vending machine?
You have to accomplish a big goal in your classroom, and you'll get a coin, and you can put it in the book vending machine, and you can pick a book out.
Does it cost you anything?
No.
Where do we get our book vending machines?
From the FTEF grant.
What's your favorite part?
That kids can learn about the world, and they can learn how to read.
So those are just two components of our kind of our literacy approach this year. Additionally, we have PLCs that are going on at each of our grade levels, and we're going to focus on reading. Obviously, we have a new elementary curriculum, so we're going to curriculum on PLCs. Our media specialist, Mary Choucy, is running a PLC the third week of each month where every grade level is involved in that. We're actually integrating some of our technology tools with our Apple pencils. We have a guest speaker coming in next Tuesday. So really with the focus on reading, anchor charts, and how we can work through that throughout the entire year. Our school-wide focus is again on reading, so each student has an academic reading wig or a reading goal. And so we're really working from individual to class to grade level to school-wide in a reading direction. So just taking this entire year, whether it be the book vending machine, or whether it be projects of a magazine product that Mrs. Pingly and her four creators did, really putting a focus on that literacy. It's kind of where we're at this year. Any questions for these guys?
Okay, so I have a question for our presenters. You talked a lot about text features. Have you seen any of those in any of your other classes, in your textbooks? Has that helped you in other ways, maybe in science and social studies and some of your other classes?
Well, I've read science, it is diagrams that explain that having a newspaper or anything.
So having something visual, and then you guys did the same thing in your magazine articles, right? Super cool.
I have a question about the vending machine. So when you got it, it really interested me. I thought it was a really cool thing. So are all grade levels able to get coins to use in the vending machine? Or is it just a special thing for kindergartners? Yes, yes, good.
I can elaborate. We do it monthly, and so kind of take off at the beginning of the year. So each month it changes. Last month was June of the month, so you've got to pick a person. This month, our special areas teachers are passing out tokens along with our special department. So it kind of changes it up, but it's open to the entire league.
Very cool, very cool.
So a couple of things. I was very impressed with the way that you guys presented, not only what the program was about, but some of your successes, some of your challenges, and some of your new learnings. One of the, reading is going to be foundational for everything that we do. And Ms. Kuhnhein's question about how it shows up in science and finding text features in your other courses is going to be really important. What I'm most impressed, frankly, may not even have been something that you guys intended to do, but you reflecting on what you learned and what you need to do next is going to be really, really important. So we have a very intentional focus on student ownership, student reflection, thinking about where your path is. I had the opportunity to be at Woodville last Friday for a town hall meeting where the whole, where all you guys were talking about proficiency and growth and what that means to you and setting goals. So I applaud Woodville, all of the Woodville teachers and you guys for taking the time to come out here and do this.
We do, we have shirts.
So we have some shirts for you. We ask for one more round of applause for our fourth grade.
Can you hand them out to your friends? All right, thank you. I know. Nice job. Yeah. Mr. Faust, will you look at them and see that they got the right sizes? Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
What? As a kindergarten shirt, oh, well, there was, bedlam, it was bedlam. There are more seats over here that are empty if you all want to move over there. Okay. Lisa, will you shut that door? Will you shut that door? Okay. Okay, this is a community forum section of the meeting of the Board of Education meeting. And this is an opportunity for members of the community to informally address the board about a variety of topics, including issues for future consideration. Since the topics raised may not be issues listed and advertised on the public agenda, the community forum is not intended to be a setting for dialogue with the board. Direct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel for future response, answered briefly if a matter of procedure or tabled as they might be a future agenda item. Speakers who have registered at the reception area are asked to identify themselves and state their reasons for addressing the board. Please address the Board of Education as a whole through the chairperson rather than individual members. We have about 15, so due to the number of speakers this evening, we ask the speakers to limit comments to two minutes. Okay? All right. The first speaker is Adam.
Hello, my name is Adam. I'm a parent to a four-year-old who is not yet at Moyer. I'm not a Democrat or Republican. I consider myself a free-thinking and critical-thinking independent who diligently searching for truthful information and knowledge in a world that I've come to know is so full of deceit. I have lost trust, like many others, in all of our mainstream media. I have gained trust in independent, crowdsourced, listener-supported, and apolitical analysts, investigators, and researchers. I'm here tonight because I strongly object to the masking of our children. I have thoroughly analyzed the cumulative data and science on mask efficacy, and the results that span decades are overwhelming and that they provide no statistical benefit. And more importantly, they ignore the risks. Nowhere in our news programming do we get an honest and fair discussion on the real harms and effects, both physical and psychological, of masking. Physical harms including loss of oxygen, CO2 accumulation, increased risks of bacterial infections like hypoxia and hypercapnia. And psychological, I came to only one meeting, my first meeting that I've ever attended, and it was in September, and Ms. Booth brought up the fourth graders. And she brought all the kids, and they were all wearing masks. And at the end, she said, "Okay, class, I want everybody in here to give everyone a great big smile, because we know how to smile with our eyes." I believe that there'd be a lot of psychologists that would call that a form of psychological from companies that I know have a long track record of fraud and corruption with no long-term studies for something that children aren't seriously affected by is astounding to me. To my knowledge, they still aren't even giving the children the approved version of the injection, meaning that it is still emergency use only, the one that they are giving. It's not Comoranty. Oxford University did a study and they did a risk assessment calculator. And between the ages of zero and nineteen, their calculation was that they had a one-in-a-million chance without treatment uh without treatment for COVID. I could go on and on about the craziness of this plandemic, but I'm out of time. But just let it be known that I cannot in good faith or conscience allow my child to attend next year if masking requirements are in place and he's going to be required to take these tests every week. If I have to create a homeschool cooperative, I will find a way. I'm just asking you please to look deeper into this and to take these considerations.
Thank you. Myrna? Ed, Eds, I'm sorry, Eds.
I come before the board today asking that COVID-19 vaccines will be left up to the parents and not the school district. I'm asking that each of you here and now will commit that the school board will stay out of it. Even if the governor orders that you all take control, even if he was to bring in the National Guard, that you will take a stand and say no. Children under the age of eighteen cannot give informed consent. They do not even know what what that is. The WHO announced that if children are in school, that that's consent enough, and I totally disagree with that. Parents and only parents should make the medical decision for their children. Perhaps I'm putting the cart before the horse, but I feel like nipping the problem now is what is needed. We all know that the Biden administration has approved the Pfizer BioNTech for emergency use authorization for five-to-eleven-year-olds. My purpose here to get today is to request this board to solemnly swear here and now that they will leave the choice to vaccinate the children of the COVID-19 vaccine up to the parents. I'm asking that this board will stand up against the tyranny or be held liable for any adverse reactions. As a healthcare provider, I'm appalled that these vaccines have not yet been pulled off the market. The numbers from the CDC and Bayer's site as of Friday, over twenty-five years vaccine adverse in vaccine adverse reaction injuries from the flu shot was seven thousand five hundred and ninety-six per year, deaths only seventy-eight. For the COVID-19 vaccine in ten months, ten months, vaccine adverse reactions for the COVID-19 vaccine is eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-five. That's adverse reactions. That's injuring people each and every day. As a nurse, I see it in my in the nursing home that I work at. I see it every single day. Deaths for COVID-19 vaccine, seventeen thousand six hundred and nineteen as of last Friday. With all this being said, I strongly believe in medical freedom and encourage everyone to do their own research. What's happening in our government today is absolutely ridiculous, and we as parents need to stand up. And we're taking a stand, not just this school board, but every school board across the country. And we we're begging you all to stay out of it and let us make our own decisions. Thank you.
Eric Peck?
Hi, everybody. My name's Eric Peck. I got two kids at Woodville, one in kindergarten and one in second grade. Uh they both have fantastic teachers this year, including Mrs. Whitner who is here tonight. But unfortunately, uh every day uh we have to put a mask on them and make them wear it the entire day. Their emotional development depends on seeing their friends' faces, and their learning depends on seeing the teacher's face. These policies also teach kids that the world is a scary place, that their friends and their activities are dangerous and harmful, which is not true. We should teach kids to be resilient and healthy instead of anxious and hysterical. No other country makes young children wear masks because they understand that children shouldn't have to suffer and bear the burden of this. In Canada, in Europe, they have stricter lockdowns than we did, but not on children because young children and young children are never masked in school. It's wrong to make young children wear masks and not be able to sit with friends at lunch. And of course, adults can do whatever they want. Most kids, even here in the United States, don't have to wear masks anymore. Uh and even in Kentucky, it looks like about half the districts have gotten rid of the mask mandate. There's no explicit mandate from the state. Um and they're like other people have said, there's no evidence that any COVID lockdown or intervention, with the exception of vaccines, was ever warranted. Statistically, there's never been evidence that mask mandates work. There's never been a rationale for the mask policy. There's never been a metric for success. There's never been a cost-benefit analysis done. The proponents of masks have never been willing to admit the harm that this does to our children, and they've never been able to argue that there's some specific benefit that outweighs that harm. There's never been a specific goal where we could say this policy succeeded and it's time to end it. And these temporary COVID policies have now lasted for years without any specific plan to end them. There's also no case number at which this is acceptable. It's possible that cases will stay the same or even go up, but that's okay because there are vaccines and treatments available now. With vaccines and treatments in place, COVID is not as dangerous as it is, particularly for children. Uh and it's time to move on and let the kids have their childhood back. Now that the vaccine is available to everyone of school age, if parents want it, you should change this policy tonight and end the mask mandate and all of the other COVID rules that are in place.
Thank you. Nicole Utz, do you want to speak? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. Um twelve years ago, my husband and I decided to move to Fort Thomas because we wanted the best in class education for our children. We felt that it was important. Um as many of you here tonight know me, you know, I'm engaged in my children's education since day one when they stepped into the Fort Thomas schools. I'm a volunteer. Actually, this weekend, I'm working Santa House. And so I I you know, I know the COVID slide has been real. We've spent months at home with our children, working our full-time jobs and educating our kids. And I know it's it's everybody has their own story and it's been tough. Um I became very alarmed at the August board meeting when I saw the AP and ACT results. The decline really has me concerned. Um and then the October report with the K-Prep and the um the star scores, I really couldn't actually quantify the information as well. But what I did is I went ahead and did some more research on my own. And the Hill just presented a report, and I'm happy to forward that to all. But it shows that children now are four months behind in reading, five months behind in math. The economic impact on them is about forty thousand dollars. Um and it's over a hundred billion-dollar impact on our economy year over year. I'm concerned. My questions, you know, so when I was looking also at some of the data, I was trying to figure out how does Fort Thomas really start off, I guess, for lack of a better term? And when I pulled the US News and World Report data, of course, you all know Kentucky is ranked forty-one out of fifty states for academics, which is also comparing. But um when I pulled the data, you know, I feel like comparing Highlands to Beachwood is kind of comparing apples to apples. And I was alarmed when I saw that Highlands High School was ranked number four hundred and twenty-two out of five hundred for public schools. And Beachwood was ranked two hundred and sixty-seven in twenty-twenty-one. Highlands math proficiency was a seventy-one percent compared to Beachwood at an eighty-one percent proficiency. Reading for Highlands High School was a seventy-six percent proficiency compared to Beachwood at an eighty-three percent proficiency. So my question is, is the district developing a strategic plan to combat the COVID slide? Are there comprehensive plans, which I think Mr. Peck's kind of already answered that from Woodville, but are there comprehensive plans being developed, academic plans in each of our each of our five schools? Are parents going to be aware of what is happening? What we're doing, what we should be doing to help all of our children combat the COVID slide? My I also am curious to know what are what what's being done to support our teachers? My children this year have almost, they have fabulous teachers in this district. We all know that. And you know, I've spent it's helped me professionally that my kids have amazing teachers, and I really don't have to provide a bunch of support this year. Although after reading some statistics, I feel like I should be providing them more support at home. So I wonder how we're supporting our teachers because to me, that's equally as important. I know they're working hard, but I don't really know what type of support the district is providing them. My other question is, um we know that Fort Thomas Independent Schools received about one point five million dollars in federal COVID relief. I don't remember the exact terminology for it, but it was about one point five million. How much of that is being applied to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year for instructional support for all of our students? I would like to know that information. And finally, I just I hope that there is a strategic focus on academics this year. And and what I'll leave you with is that um strong academics in Fort Thomas schools drive the economy of Fort Thomas, right? Because our schools are dependent on school tax dollars. So I think.
Thank you. Do you want to answer any of those?
Well, and and Nicole, all of those questions have really good answers. We can get you the the numbers for uh the COVID dollars, the ARP dollars, the strategic plan development that we're working through. And so I I would encourage you to reach out to me, and I'm I'm happy to to share to share all of those answers with you.
Thank you.
Um the the COVID dollars are just under two million dollars is what Fort Thomas received when you look at all three of them. Uh I'm going to hit it really generally here because we have a lot of speakers today. But um those dollars, the first two rounds, were predominantly used for us to stay in school, uh which um was we used just about every dollar plus the third round for them to for additional substitute teachers, for the equipment that we needed, for um the supplies and and basically for us to go to school, which I believe was the intent of of those dollars um over the last year or so. Uh this last round is is to reduce learning loss through uh through purchase of 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 software. And we've also engaged in in leases for for technology in order to to be able to to address the very needs that that you talked about. So so um what I would tell you is is that we have, while two million dollars seems like a very generous allocation comparatively, um it is a very small fraction uh to to what the rest of of the state frankly got. For example, we have a a local school that's comparable in size, and those and those three rounds receives almost, well, actually, in excess of thirty million dollars. Um a school, most of the schools our size. Um well, I know of at least one school that has under two hundred students that had a comparable allocation that we did. And so um I I believe that the Fort Thomas School District is is using those dollars exactly the way they're intended uh to be used um and stretching them farther than a than a lot of other places. But but I'm happy to share with anybody who would who would reach out with with me more specifics in that plane. I I don't know that it's posted currently on our website, is it, Bill?
Okay, Toby, is it? Okay, Toby, is it Varland?
Oh, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be here again. My name is Toby Varland. For people who who don't know me, I've been at one of these meetings before to say something similar. But I want to thank the board for continuing the masking policy so far. I think it's working. There have been cases in schools, but it hasn't been, it hasn't made big news. I encourage you to stick with what's working. You know, our our county just recently moved from the red designation to the orange designation. But last year at this time, we were kind of moving in the right direction, and then the holidays hit and there's a big spike up. You know, my daughter right now is over at the high school on the crew for Radiant Girls, and she is absolutely loving it. This is her first, her first time she's been able to participate in the theater program. She did remote schooling all year last year and missed that. And I would hate for something to have happened to her to have to quarantine and miss out on more opportunities like that. My calculus is any parent who doesn't want their kid to wear a mask or doesn't want their kid to get a vaccine has that right. If you're going to send your kid into a public setting that is largely paid for by public tax dollars, that thing that that setting has to be focused on the public good. And there has to be a conservative choice made that when it comes to safety of all the students going a little overboard is almost a decision that has to be made. And I'm very sympathetic. I know there are problems and downsides to wearing masks. I hate that my kids have to do it. I hate that all kids have to do it. But I also know, I just sat over there when the teachers from Woodville were talking to their fourth graders about coming up here and the kindergarten about coming up here. And their teacher said, hey, well, you guys go up there. If you want to, you can take your masks down while you're talking. Not one of those five kids cared to take their mask down. In all of my conversations with my daughter, who's in ninth grade, and her friends, my son, who's in eighth grade, and his friends, none of them think it's a problem to wear a mask at school. I know that's not everybody. They would all prefer not to, but the universal reaction of all the students I've talked to is it's not that big of a deal. So again, I thank you for the diligence so far. I ask that we please continue it. And I I appreciate all the other work that you guys do, like some others. I moved to this district in large in large part because of the school district. And um I I've been happy with that decision. I hope I'll continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Whitney?
I'm Tracy Whitney. I have one student, um or one child that is a student at a high school. In August, I asked if the mask mandate has to do with money and why do you why you would not support the HB one plan? One board member stated, and I quote, "Focus on what we do, a public education, the very best one, and we want to continue to do that. All of this will take the eye off the ball, and we will deal with lawyers all the time. We will get sued, and probably we will have to deal with an enormity of circumstances that remove our focus from where it should be," end quote. Based upon the legal opinion of Chris Wiest, by implementing an HB one plan, KDE is subject to the Boone Circuit Court Permanent Injunction, and that means that they must comply with that House Bill one. House Bill one allows you, as an individual school district, to prepare a plan that meets the requirements of that statute and has overriding language that overrides all other regulations, including the KDE mask regulation. It is a shame that FTIS are teaching students about science and research, but our own school board is blind to the research-based articles regarding how ineffective masks are for us because of the bottom line. At this point, I would like to know the plan to remove masks, especially since other school districts have in immediate plans to remove masks. In regards to providing the very best public education, my question is, why was there not a plan put in place to continue the best public education to our students when their high school math teacher was removed from the school and has not returned since last week? Parents and students deserve to know a plan of action for this circumstance. That has nothing to do, I this is um that is a feeling from many parents that have reached out to me personally. Um and I will be emailing my concerns to each board member and look forward to your individual answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Clem, panel?
Hi, Clem Fennell, I've got two daughters at Moyer, and I was here a couple of months ago, and I think I was the only one that was in favor of getting rid of the mask mandate and requirements. Glad to see that there's a lot of people that are now on my, speaking before me and really just echoing what has already been said. I hope as we continue to go through all of the different things that we're all experiencing in our personal business life, everything else, with vaccine requirements and whatnot, that you guys allow parents to make the decisions on those. It's spoken very well before me. We're in a way different place today than we were last year, and we need to move on from it. We do have vaccinations, I've talked to multiple teachers who, they just want to get rid of their masks, you know, students that want to get rid of them. The risk was so low, has always been so low, and it's almost like we're hypocritical of other things that we allow the schools and the kids to do when there's such a low risk of them getting COVID or being affected by it. So, I don't quite understand, you know, I was still there. Spoken very nicely on the vaccination requirements, I just hope that we can let parents decide what's best for our kids, so just echoing that. Thanks.
Hello, school board, my name's John Veneman, I'm here for two purposes tonight, actually. One is, there seems to be a boy using the girls restroom consistently, and my daughter does not feel safe, and she's very uncomfortable with this. The boys come in there several times while she's in there, and the principal and superintendent, their answer is, well, just go down and use the office bathroom. So, my daughter has to be inconvenienced, and all the other girls have to be inconvenienced at this for one person who identifies as a female fox? I mean, I'm pretty sure foxes go outside, right? This is the, this is the government fluff that Mr. Darnell sent me today, I didn't have time to read through it all, not sure I can either, because it's a little intense, and I'm going to have to have a lawyer read through it as well, but I don't agree with the mask mandate either, I think it's a matter of parents' choice. But on the boy in the girls bathroom, very disappointed, you know, it's their job to protect my daughter's rights when she's at school, and it doesn't seem to be happening. So, when, why is it that special rights override my daughter's rights? You know, I just don't see how this is, how this makes sense to anybody, you know? Use the bathroom you're assigned to at birth, so, thank you for your time, I've said all I need to say.
Hi, I'm Joan Ferris, I'm here tonight as a lifelong resident of Fort Thomas. Like my parents, siblings, children, and grandchildren, I was educated in Catholic schools instead of public schools, choosing one school system over another is a personal decision, and one that in my family's case was made with care and conviction. My point tonight is that it doesn't, or at least shouldn't, matter where our kids go to school, or if we even have kids at all. If you live in Fort Thomas, the majority of your property taxes go to the schools, that's just how it is. With that in mind, please recognize that by paying taxes, I do have a stake in the current and future plans for the Fort Thomas Independent School System. Over time, we've paid a lot of money into a system that has scored high in many different rankings over the years, but which recently seems, in many lights, to be falling off of a cliff. That's a concern for every single homeowner, taxpayer, or resident of Fort Thomas. After I spoke at a board member, at a board meeting or two, I received a couple of emails saying that I had no business commenting since I don't have kids in the school, but as you know, I do help fund these exact schools. Let me make you clear that I, among thousands of others, do not want in any way to help fund a school that places the safety of a student behind the so-called feelings of another student. I, among others, do not want to fund, help fund a school that indoctrinates its students to identify as either a victim or an oppressor. I do not want to help fund a school that forces their students to hide their faces, their emotions, their smiles, their laughs, or their tears behind senseless face masks for hours upon hours every day. Science has proven that masking kids is a severe detriment to the emotional and intellectual development of children, all the while providing no benefit in reducing the spread of a virus. I don't want to help fund a school that doesn't have an annual open house, an event that has always served as a powerfully transparent tool to invite the parents into the learning environment of their children, and the list goes on. I am here tonight to speak for those whose stake or value isn't considered legitimate to some in our community. Those people who dismiss us are wrong. Please know that thousands of us stand with this core group that is trying to save the reputation of the Fort Thomas School System, and in fact, each individual school itself. There was a sleeping giant out there, but that sleeping giant has been awakened. They are now wide awake, they are well-informed, and they are speaking out. My advice, admittedly unsolicited, is for you to be proactive while you still can be. It's still time, it's the time to listen, it's time to respond, it's time to save the Fort Thomas school as we knew them before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you all for serving, first of all, this can't be easy for you guys. I have three children, two have graduated already, one is a junior. And recently, I called and discussed the reason behind no open house with Brian and also with the principal of the high school, and I just, I cannot encourage you enough to make this open house a priority. At a time where parents are increasingly concerned about what is happening with the high school and the middle school, this is not a time to keep parents at a distance. And shut down communication. I have been to two decades of parent-teacher conferences, and every time, I walk away with a better rapport with those teachers. I'm a busy parent, as all of us are, and we do not have time to schedule with every single teacher, and I'm certain that the teachers don't want that either. In the name of transparency and unity with the parents and teachers, I encourage you to put this at top of the list. There are plenty of events that are going on, and I understand that our school calendar is packed. This, in this current climate, this needs to be top. Also, if you all cannot look at those sweet fourth graders, I mean, I literally thought I was going to burst into tears watching you all, to see them have to look at you in their sweet presentations and not see one smile on your face because it's covered up, that is heartbreaking to me. And at a time when it's like ninety-nine percent that these kids aren't going to get this, where did our critical thinking go? Where did our encouraging kids to be fearless and to be strong and courageous, where did that go? Where is, where is it that we are, why are we teaching our kids that you have immune systems that you can absolutely make better by exercise, fresh air, all the things that we know, but instead, we're telling them to be fearful because they might get a virus, which they're going to get over? It just absolutely sickens me, it just, it sickens me. And I don't know, most schools I teach, we have a hundred, we have a very small private school, mask-free. The only people that have to stay home, the only time they have to, is when the state is forcing them to stay home to quarantine because somebody else has got it in their house. It's pathetic, it is absolutely pathetic. So, the diocese of Covington recently put out a review saying that they have gone mask optional. I don't know if you all have read it, you should read it.
That's not exactly what it says.
What does it say?
Well, I'll let you go back and read it again.
Okay.
But it's not exactly what it says.
It doesn't say they're going mask optional?
Depends, depends on their, their race and what they see.
Okay, but one thing that it does say, I'm pretty sure that they're mask optional, okay?
It depends.
And it also says that, oh, their school principals and counselors have reported a significant increase in the need for mental health services for students over the 2021 and 2021, 22 school year. Many students are demonstrating increased anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation. We have found that the forced isolation from quarantines are a significant issue for adolescents. This school year, over thirty students in their diocese have been evaluated and hospitalized for suicidal ideation. Do you understand that? Suicidal ideation. And we're still masking our kids, and we're still teaching them to be fearful. This is the outcome of going a little overboard in the name of public good. This is not a little overboard. This is a fear-driven policy, and it should sicken all of us. I encourage you to end the masking tonight. I sat in a gym. I sat in a gym for a packed cheer competition this weekend, and there's, everybody's fine. The thing that makes me sick is that these kids walk in, and the adults, especially, I see my daughter, put it up above your nose, put it up above your nose. I'm telling you, if one more adult says that to my kid, I'm afraid what I might do, because I have tried to teach my children to walk in courage and not in fear, and that is absolutely ridiculous. You are driving home fear in these children, and it has to stop. The last thing from the comments, I'd also would like to know what in the stuff with the COVID dollars, if you could include what FTIS had to agree to in order to get those Shake your head, I think what?
Nothing, nothing, no. It was, how much money you got was free and reduced lunch, it was totally, just like Title One funds are coming to you.
So, you can do whatever you want to do? Thank you.
A lot of people didn't do it.
Okay.
Maybe I used it for the response.
Yes. And we knew.
Listen, I, I want you to know, I am not doing this in an accusatory way, although I'm very angry, it may come across as that, I'm sorry, I'm just fed up with the masks, and I, I am very appreciative of the time that you guys serve, but I've had it with the masks, and I've also had it with not doing things in the name of transparency. When I find out things from my daughter or second and third hand on Facebook of stuff that is happening in the high school, it is extremely alarming. And why letters aren't sent out to say, this is what happened with this employee, and you need to be aware of it, and we shut it down immediately. I would be the first person to say, thank you, Fort Thomas, thank you for letting me in on what is happening with my daughter, instead of trying to put up this glossy veneer like everything's fine, we're all wonderful here. Okay, we know how schools run, it's hard, we know that parents can be unreasonable, I understand that, but I also need transparency from everybody in the school, otherwise, all it does is breed suspicion. That's it.
Hi, my name is Vicki Fennell, and I've heard lots of incidents recently about the restrooms at school. My question for you is, is a biological boy male allowed to use a girl's restroom? Is a biological female allowed to use a boy's restroom? What is the policy? If they are not, what is the consequence?
All of these things are going to be addressed, actually, a little later on. I probably would have encouraged us to address them before many of these speakers came up here, because I think a lot of these answers are going to be, going to come out in that, but I'll defer to Brian to choose how he wants to handle that. But that question will be answered, as will the masking, and I assume pretty much every other one as well. Do you want to do that now, or do you want to wait until everybody speaks?
Well, I mean, we can speak to the mask question in a little more depth, and provide a little bit more background there. Regarding the restroom question, we don't have an open policy that would allow all boys to use girls restrooms and all girls to use boys restrooms, that is not, that is not the case. And in terms of the question around gender identification, frankly, we're in fairly uncharted territory here, and we are, we're having to address it on an individualized basis. We have to address it based on advice from council and changing rules on a continuous basis. But we can't go into a tremendous amount of depth in a public forum out of, from a privacy standpoint for students and so on, but I can assure you that we don't have an open restroom policy where boys can use girls restrooms and girls can use boys restrooms, but it does get a little more complex when we start talking about gender identification and.
Well, it does, but all of us know what happened in Virginia, and I don't want to see that happen here, and then you're going to do something about it.
I can speak to the mask question now, I don't know if we have.
We have one more mask.
You know, none of us want masks, and frankly, I'm ready to be finished with them as well, you know, I'll say it on record. This isn't going to be, you know, we're not going to be able to engage in a public debate, you know, we've been accused of challenges with transparency, we have been extremely transparent. I answer every question, I be with people individually, we've had public forums that have had varying levels of attendance. Transparency is not the issue, the issue is, is that we have to make decisions that aren't fully popular with all people.
Transparency was about the open house.
Ma'am?
I just.
I get that, but there have been.
It wasn't about masking.
Okay, thank you. We have not wavered from day one on what we value in terms of how we're making the decisions, and a lot of these conversations tonight, quite frankly, intersect. The challenge with student achievement is getting students in school. From day one, we have indicated that our value has been to make sure we maximize the number of students who are in our school each and every day. Our other value, and our administrators and our teachers are working every single day to try to juggle this, is making sure that we minimize the disruptions that happen in our school day. I'd take the masks off tomorrow, but frankly, we're working through having to deal and address and follow quarantine protocol that requires that when a student has a positive the entire day of principals, of assistant principals, of nurses, of teachers, figuring out who is within close proximity, who is vaccinated, who is not vaccinated, all of those factors go into a complete and total disruption of our school day. These are values that we've, that we've, that we've had from day one. Quite frankly, having students with masks and with few exceptions with lunch have minimized disruptions to our school day because we don't have to have close contact quarantine, and we haven't had to do all of the assessment piece. Test to stay has been exceptionally successful. We've had very few students that have had to be sent home as a result of close contact quarantine. So, as long as we follow the local public health requirements around, around. So as long as we follow the local public health requirements around, around quarantining and we value and continue to value students being at school each and every day, which we know is a critical part of student achievement, we have to have some standards by which we make our decisions for when we're going to have universal masking or not. As long as we value our principals leading through a, a lack of disruption, we've got to have some kind of standard by which we make the decisions. There are three pieces that are, that are driving when we'll make the decision to, to remove masks. The first one is, what is the general infection rate within 41075? Prior to last Thursday, 41075 was red. Last Thursday, it turned orange. I almost did somersaults in cartwheels. I was pretty excited about this. We have been orange ever since, but not by a lot. And frankly, 41075 was the highest level of infection in Campbell County for, for a period of time. As long as it is red and the infection rate is high, the likelihood of having to do close contact quarantining and sending healthy kids home is pretty high. The second factor that we'll look at will be the number of active positive cases in our schools. Today, it was eleven when, when you look at the school district. It's been hovering between fifteen and twenty-five. We are seeing declines, but we had not seen a decline for a period of time. Fifteen positive cases in our schools, if they're masked, results in very few close contact quarantining and sending very few kids home. Without masks, unless they're vaccinated, it creates an entire disruption to the day, and we send a lot of students either to test to stay or we send them home. And it probably overwhelms our test to stay capacity. So that's the second factor. It's trending in the right direction. The third piece is students who are in all of our grades and families having the decision. And, and there has been no discussion on this board of education where we would mandate vaccination, but a family having the ability to make a decision to vaccinate was another factor that we've considered. That now is on the table, and now we're, we just have a, a period of time where, where families can make that call and they're not reliant on other family decisions in terms of, of infection. That is very close. Our intention is, is not to return in the second semester with masks, for sure. So unless, well, let me say this, let me retract that. Unless conditions dramatically change with the trajectory we're on and the period of those factors in place, we intend to come back in the second semester with masks recommended, but not required. And so that is, that is our hope. That is our goal. If we continue to see, to see the, the numbers track downward in a dramatic way and we can make that decision sooner, we'll do it. But at present, we're projecting at, at returning from our Christmas break with it being a recommended piece. At that point, all families will have had an opportunity, should they choose to do so, to, to vaccinate children from ages five to eighteen, but that'll be their choice and that'll be their decision. But I will say, and I'll go on record, if we get into a situation where we have to send many healthy children home because of close contact quarantining, and that is a mitigating factor for us to be able to have our kids in front of our teachers, then we will make the decision and we'll make that recommendation to, to enter it back on. The last thing I'll say in regards, local, local decisions. I only know of Kenton County locally that, that has gone to a mask optional, and I know the diocese has as well. But when you look at the factors, they have, they have factors that are in place that could result in a weekly decision where people mask and then unmask, and then they mask and they unmask. And it is a value of this board that when we make this decision, that it's not a regular distraction where we are having a weekly discussion and debate about whether it's time to, to, to put the masks back on. So from a value standpoint, we've made a conscious decision to try to have some semblance of, of basically a rhythm of time. Frankly, our, our, our students have not, we're doing school. We're doing, we are having collaboration. We are having investigations. We are having public speaking. We are doing school. And, and, and it hasn't been as dramatic of a, of an issue with students as sending fifty and sixty of them home when they're healthy. That's our rationale. That's, that's as well as I can say it or as, or as, as clear as I can say it. I don't have a number because if we give a number and then, and situations change, then we're flipping back around as well. But I'm telling you that we are, we are making plans right now to return after our break with mask optional unless things change. So I'm, I'm willing to take any, if I left anything out or anything else that we need to put in there, I'm happy to address it. But, but that's as, as transparent as I, as, as I know to be.
I'm not a fan of the mask mandate at all. I've said that before. I'll say it again. The reasons, again, go back to the close contact quarantining. I think it's better, unfortunately, to have the kids in masks than to have fifteen, twenty kids have to go home because of this quarantining mess, and, and that is a requirement that we have to live with. So, but we have a plan, and that plan is to start next semester with a mask optional scenario. I know you've already heard that. It's already been said, but I don't want to reiterate that again, that we do have a plan. And I will also say for me personally, I will never vote for a vaccine mandate. I won't do it. I won't speak for anybody else, but I won't do it. I want to see this mask mandate end as quickly as possible, and I'll also say for me personally, I don't dismiss anybody that comes up here, whether you have a kid in the school or not. I agree. If you pay taxes, you have a right to be heard. Absolutely. So I one-hundred percented behind that. And if, if there's a transparency issue, which I'm not aware there is, then we need to address it because we need to be completely transparent with everyone. Well, I'm, I'll be honest with you. I'll tell you that I'm not totally versed on the circumstances with the open house, but I'm going to find out and see what's going on, and maybe that's on me that I don't know, but more details to follow.
The middle school had their open house this year.
Okay.
So, just prepped that out. The, the school wasn't happening. It was fabulous. I haven't been into the schools. My, I don't know what Memorial looks like anymore, to be honest. My kids started in first grade. He's in third. I've been there four times now because I'm room mom, so I got to go this year. I can't tell you how I get to my kids' classrooms.
Yeah, well, that's really sad and unfortunate.
It hurts my heart because I would love to be in there to read to them and
Sure.
to be an asset to teachers, truly. I mean that.
Oh, I know. One of the greatest things we have here is parent participation, so that's unfortunate.
Could you please stay off the board a little more, um, you just committed to some of the things that right now the people have said, that no mandate for vaccine, the mask optional, that I haven't heard the mask decision, but that, yeah, you like the open house. That's, that's, someone with those beliefs seems to be representing the people in the community.
Isn't twenty-four years enough? I said, isn't twenty-four years enough? I will say that, I will say that this is an incredibly good board. This is a fantastic school board that's up here. I will vouch for them every day, all day long. They have, they're focused in the right place. We don't agree on everything. That's absolutely true. But I respect them and I respect their opinions, and I will tell you that my ears are open to their thoughts as well. I mean, I think they're, they're sharp people and they have good ideas. And everybody up here, again, has the kids and the community's best interest. I promise you that.
And I just want to say one thing about the, the money that, that we got. You know, when this board was really adamant about our kids going back to school, we knew it was going to cost a million dollars. And we were, we were willing to take it out of the general fund to have our kids back. I mean, that was, we needed more space. We needed to spread them out. We needed to clean, all those kinds of things. So the money that we got just reimbursed that. So there is nothing that's a lot of money out there that's been used for anything else other than just keeping our kids in school, which, you know, we were really, really, we had a strong feeling for that. So that's what that money was used for. Okay. Elizabeth Alagreeny.
You made it.
We did. Okay, you good? Okay.
Wait, wait, can I, I'm going to use her minutes because I am, again, I would like to understand a little bit better because I guess I just understand the flow chart. You're saying that the local public health, you have to follow the local public health flow chart? Is, I mean, since, I mean, like, what, what, who is telling you? I guess that's what I'm asking. I mean, I'm being very honest. Like, who is telling, you guys keep saying this, but who is the one telling you you have to follow this, these guidelines? Because again, if you did the HB1 plan, the way I understand it is that not. So that's what I'm just trying to figure out again.
House Bill One allowed for schools to make decisions around whether they wear masks or not. The, the Northern Kentucky Health Department has guidelines by which you make decisions around close contact quarantining.
Okay, guidelines. Okay, okay.
Those guidelines require that students who are unmasked inside of six feet
Right.
for fifteen minutes or more would be required to undergo quarantine protocol.
Okay.
Okay, if you, if both parties are masked outside of three feet or if a student is vaccinated, then, then they are precluded from, from close contact quarantining.
So who's telling you you have to follow the Northern Kentucky Health Department guidelines?
I, I don't know of.
Who's telling you to do that?
I, I don't know of any school district that is not following.
And why, again, and it kind of comes back to the lawyer situation, that you're afraid of a lawsuit then. And again, I'm just being transparent here too. I mean, I'm just trying to connect the dots because no one has really said, again, you could have done the HB1 plan and made it a choice, correct? And then.
The HB1 plan and, and, and the the Health Department requirements for quarantining and the HB1 plan are not related. They're not, HB1 did not address.
But when has Northern Kentucky Health Department determined the schools what they have to do regarding? So again, I'm, I'm being ignorant because I don't know. That's, that's been my biggest thing. I'm like, you guys keep saying, I'm like, but who is telling you to do this?
I mean, look, straight up, we could go rogue if we wanted to, I'm sure. But that's not a good idea, and I don't want to go back to the lawyers because I know you apparently don't like that. But understand that, that, you know, we have, we're stewards of the district's money. We're stewards of the taxpayers' money. We, we have fiscal responsibility here, and you have to weigh all those things. You have to look at all the scenarios and all the options and say, like, what's the best thing to do in this situation? And we will undoubtedly have significant repercussions if we don't follow the Health Department's guidelines relative to the quarantining and what have you. I can assure you, that will be a nightmare for us, logistically and probably legally. But, you know, I don't know that for sure. But again, when weighing all the options and realizing that every other district is doing the same thing relative to the Health Department, it behooves us to follow those same guidelines, at least based on what I've heard.
Okay, so it does come down to the fact that you can choose not to follow the Northern Kentucky Health Department. You can choose that, but you're choosing to do that because you're nervous that something will happen. Someone will.
I think, I think for me, and let me, I know, I know you are. You know, we're in a, this is all evolved. And so you know when we, you know, we were going to flatten the curve and be fifteen days and that sort of thing and the quarantining. So this has evolved, is where we are. And this is from CDC. This is from the state regulations. And we're trying to keep kids healthy and in school. So, you know, it's, it's, I'm all for personal choice and all that and where you go and that sort of thing. But we've got thirty little children or twenty-five little kids in a classroom, everybody with personal choice. We're just trying to keep them in there. And they jump in here, but the Health Department has said, the rules are the contact tracing, how, how the virus was spreading, how contagious it was, that this is what we needed to do in a public health forum. Does that answer that?
I do. I, I don't know that in our, in our community forum, we're going to be able to, to provide enough back and forth and clarity around who's the governing authority in, in these cases. I, I think it's, it's a more complex question than that. House Bill One allowed us to make decisions around masking. The, the Health Department standards apply what a close contact quarantine looks like. And so if you make a decision in one, you follow the consequences of the other. That's, that's the, that's the only way I know how to explain it. They're not, they're not a hundred percent related. Again, what I'm, what I'm.
So when does it come to a point that we don't have to listen to the Northern Kentucky Health Department? Like, I, I guess, again, when do we ever start listening to them about the schools? I, I guess, so I'll talk with you later, Brian, because you're awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I appreciate this. Sorry, I just wanted to try to clarify it.
Thank you. Kelly Booth.
Hello, I'm back again. Just wanted to recognize some of our fabulous speakers on the House of the Four Cities Education Association. We got some good ones. I'll talk you quick. So we have a dynamic duo from Woodville. We have Donna Hicks and Kelly Smith. They've been working together to build some positive community at Woodville amongst their staff, and the benefits of that are trickling down to the students. These two have worked together to build plans for Rest Cancer Awareness Day. They organized a faculty and staff fundraiser. They organized snacks. They created a bulletin board recognizing loved ones that had beat cancer. They coordinated Halloween costumes. They also organized new Woodville sweatshirts to demonstrate school pride and spirit. And I think that this kind of works such an amazing example for our students. It shows them the value of community service, community building, and I just think the two of these fabulous women have taught our kids that teamwork makes the dream work. And I think they have worked to create a really joyful environment for our students in Woodville to learn and grow. So they're just fantastic. Congratulations. Woodville is winning tonight. That's awesome. The association also wants to recognize the work of Ryan Augustin at Highland High School, or Highland Middle School, sorry. He's been very busy. He has spearheaded several projects, not, not just one. He has been organizing things for student council. He has done work with Red Ribbon Week and has coordinated activities for Veterans Day. So he has worked with student council to create a competition for our students to participate in Camp Food Drive, which provides our students a fantastic opportunity to engage in service learning. He's also put together a door decorating contest for Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week. Sorry, that's a lot of Rs, which is such an important message to get to our young students. And his servant leadership extended to Veterans Day as well. Mr. Augustin worked to coordinate cards and posters to honor our veterans. I'm just really impressed by this type of teacher leadership. It creates opportunities for our students to learn what it means to be a citizen of our great nation, and I am grateful for his work. All right, now I'm going to talk about Jean Becker, and I'm going to try not to cry because I talked about Jean Becker and it makes me cry. I'll never forget, I took, took my daughter out of her classroom, and she introduced my daughter to Bill, the beard dragon. And that was the day that my daughter learned love science because she was like, I want to come back to this classroom and I want to learn more science than she ever. She's also my fellow sophomore mom. She carries a lot of the sophomore babies with me, so I appreciate that. And now I'm going to share some things that her colleagues have to say about her. She stays out of school every day, every day, including Fridays, to help students in biology as well as in adding in physiology. Her students deeply appreciate how much they have learned from her, and many of them stay in contact with her long after she has left the nest. She also has a deep commitment to her colleagues. Whenever a fellow science teacher has to take a sick day, she is there to make sure those subs have everything they need to keep our kids learning and moving forward. That is a huge benefit to having a colleague. Like, having somebody that can have your back is huge, and Jean Becker fills that bill perfectly. She is a fierce advocate, advocate for her students and her colleagues, and we at the high school are honored and grateful to call her our friend, colleague, and mentor. So. All of these teachers were fantastic, and thank you for taking the listen and.
Thank you. Well, thank you. This is the end of the community forum. I again, thank you for coming and, and sharing your feelings with us. If there are further questions and you want to stay around and talk to district staff or call them, I know Brian is, is, you know, been meeting constantly with people. So if you have questions, you want more detail on things, Brian, Bill, Jamie are around in the district office as well. And again, thank you for coming. Thank you. All right, we are going into the action items, and the first one on the list is Jerry Wisman.
Getting closer. We have project update, and we have a change for tonight, which we discussed a little bit last week. In terms of project update, Morrell Construction still continues to work through a couple of the minor issues that has, had presented themselves so far. We anticipate maybe a few others will creep up as we move through winters, our first winter with free stalls and, and, and snow and ice and things like that. But Morrell's always stood behind us on all our projects, and we will anticipate that they'll put in behind us on this one as well. You know, the items of, I believe, particular note, we've been working with them extensively the last. You know, the items of, with particular note, we've been working with them extensively the last, like, week plus, trying to solve an issue with a little bit of smell in the building. They feel they've made, made some headwinds in the last couple of days. But, you know, we won't notice over the next few days. And then they have made some corrective actions on that emergency overflow drain. But again, we have to wait until the end of September to see if that's had a desired effect. That's the reason we're not bringing a pay application to you tonight because we won't reduce the retainers until we know these current things that, that are solved. The change order, we discussed it a little bit last week. In terms of most of the being items that were required by code or just, you know, hey, we've gotta change where this stuff work is to make this particular area in a work back. So most of those, no one had any issue with. I did go back and just speak with Joe Hayes, the architect, about the one item for lower two thousand dollars that you all expressed some concern on, and he understood that. He has agreed to work with K L H so that the two of them, between the two companies, they would pay for that. However, in the interest of moving forward, particularly so that Matt Morrell can pay his subcontractors, they've asked us to approve that tonight so that when we do the pay application, Matt can invoice for it and then they will reimburse us. We do not find ourselves in this situation often. But this is the same pattern we have taken when these minor situations do occur where, you know, we, for lack of a better term, object, we're being billed for something. But Joe, I'm sure Joe's agreed that between K L H and R E H that they would pay that two thousand and four dollars.
I guess I'm confused, why do we have to go ahead and prove that and pay him and then have him pay us back?
Because Matt, the, the way it was processed, Matt really can't pay the subcontractor unless we approve it or they have to go all the way back and redo the entire change order. And then he's held up a month on all the other items as well. I don't know if that's, there's not a great way to explain it. Matt can't, Matt cannot invoice us.
And really, the, the item in question is a small portion of the change, the overall change order.
Is it two thousand dollars it's ever come up?
Yeah, I agree with that. I just don't understand the logic behind us paying them and then them paying us back. You've cleared through Joe, Joe's been down this road a million times.
It was Joe's suggestion. Brian and I discussed it. Because I honestly, I don't think we had any, I know we didn't have any of these before on the Johnson project. I don't know that we had any on the Moier project. I think we're going all the way back to when Jean Kirsten was superintendent before we had any of these situations. It does not happen often.
And I, it, it feels to me that, that, that he would, he would suggest that Morrell isn't responsible, responsible for, for the charge back or the refund. And so the pay app is going to Morrell between R E H and K L H. That's the responsible party who, who have to figure out, that's where they're gonna give the, the refund to us, is my understanding of it. So I, I believe full hearted, wholeheartedly that, that Joe will, will make it right and it's a, it's fairly small. I suppose I'll look at it as Morrell being the G C, they should deal with it themselves. We shouldn't be paying them personally. But in the essence of time, I'll take it up with Joe myself.
Well, I think what, what Joe's saying is Matt did additional work to help resolve the situation. And I think that what Joe's saying is admitting that there was a little bit of a design issue there. And that Matt should be held fiscally responsible for solving the problem that he did not create. That makes it sound even better.
I guess I just look at, in the end, who's the one that's going to not be paid for it?
I think that, you know, we'll pay Morrell and then my guess is, having even have sort of them before, they'll probably split it fifty-fifty and then R E H will reimburse, or will be reimbursed by K L H and R E H will pass the check.
Okay.
Or, or it would be a very bold distinct credit on one of their invoices.
How, how fast do you think that'll happen? By next month?
For the next pay application?
Yeah.
Matt would like to see a portion of it, but since at least one of them is contingent on the weather, you know,
I was thinking, I was asking how fast it would show up in basically our credit.
Oh, that, that particular item. We, we get re, sorry, we get invoiced by R E H. It's not on a regular schedule, it's not on a monthly schedule. I'm sure that Carol Hayes is working on some of that final invoicing now. You, you know, if you notice, we actually don't bring their invoices to you for approval.
Yeah.
But in this case, I would make sure you saw it.
I was just thinking that it might be wise to see that we could get this done by the time the December board meeting comes up.
I was hoping to hear from the final pay application tonight, actually.
Well, and I was just thinking about the credit, so that he's talking about and just saying, so we know it went through and it came back and-
I'll ask Carol if she can take care of that.
Okay.
One last thing, can you elaborate on this smell circumstance? First I've heard about it.
Is we experience some at Moier, and we have occasionally in some of the other buildings.
Is it a sewer gas or?
A little bit of a, well, not a little bit, in some cases it's, it's quite distinct. So it is a sewer gas smell, seems to be confined to one area of the building. The initial thought was that it was venting up out of the sewer vent line on the roof, being picked up by HVAC units bringing in unfresh air, as I said, in the building. We did turn that unit off to see if that changed anything. We still got some in the building. So we had the plumbers come in, of all of Morrell's personnel, and they started searching that area. They did find one cap that was loose, tightened that, it seemed good for several days. And then we started to notice it again. We do feel that it's pretty being brought in by the areas, they have raised the vent lines. But there was one they did not raise. We still got some in some areas today. So they were coming back out today to raise that vent line to see if we're good over the next few days.
So thinking is that they're bringing in outside air that is cutting caught in the vent lines up on the roof?
Comes up. We, we had that at the high school. We, we experienced that in some of the first phases we moved into. And we, we, the district staff actually took P B C up and raised those lines up above the air intakes by about two and a half feet. And it solved the issue there. We occasionally get some issues in all our buildings because we have a lot of floor drains. We have a lot of different things that, especially in mechanical losses that's caused by HVAC. So when they're not condensating, sometimes those traps dry out.
These traps will dry out.
We have to, you know, we're supposed to go around and, and stay on top of those. But occasionally one gets missed. I, I, I feel fairly confident, I can predict a couple in the high school that will get missed because they're in places where people just don't go on. So they're out of sight, out of mind. And I'll get a call one day and I'll remind them about the ones, up in the technical rooms, above the dressing rooms. And they'll remember the block there, they'll take care of it, and that was all the problem.
Okay, well, please keep us informed on the progress there and ultimately what you determine is the, the issue.
And this is a compliment. Ashley and Christine are very good about checking in every morning, letting them know the status isn't good or we have an issue, what the case is, because that's what we need to know. I, I like when I don't get an early text because that means maybe we're on the right road. Because that's, that's, that's what they're, that's what they need.
Well, again, this is the kind of stuff we want to make sure gets fixed now, in case it is something more significant. So I would ask you to continue to stay on it. And I'm sure the staff will stay on it, so.
They, they-
Provide an updated future date.
The, the staff is very good about letting us know. So not just Ashley and Christine, but the teachers and-
I, I assume that we're, we've resolved or are resolving any concerns around the neighborhood with the school? And that's about?
We, we are working on that, yes.
So it's in progress?
Yes. Any other questions? So this will go back to change order number nine, which is for twenty-three thousand five hundred twelve dollars, which means we have increased the amount we owe them, Morrell Construction, by that amount.
All right, I need a motion for the approval of change order number nine in the amount of twenty-three thousand five hundred twelve dollars for the Johnson Elementary replacement project. Does anyone have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the CATS first offer of assistance, I think we're waiting for Jody Johnson to come up here and talk about that.
Good evening, everyone. Each year, the School Facilities Construction Commission offers local board of education, offers assistance. These are CATS dollars, these are used for educational technology funding. They offer these, the office of assistance to districts who have, or have supplied a technology activity report, a digital rating survey, and a district technology plan that's been approved by the board, which we have done all three in the past twelve months. Historically, what we've used these funds for is we have used them for staff device replacement opportunities. We've used them for networking infrastructure updates. We use them for professional learning opportunities and we've used them historically also for student technology leadership program opportunities. This year, we have received our first offer of assistance in the amount of twenty-six thousand eighty-two dollars. In order to accept this offer of assistance, the offer must be matched equally by the Board of Education or escrowed for up to three years. So I would like to, and I ask any questions that you have. And if you have no questions, I would like to recommend that we go ahead and make the offer of assistance and match it for this coming year.
Questions at all? Okay. I need a motion for approval to accept and match the CATS first offer of assistance in the amount of twenty-six thousand eighty-two dollars.
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Change to policy zero five three one, Brian?
This is the second reading of policy zero five point three one. It is really just to add two five zero four memorial to, to our lease capacity, ability to, to have networking events there. So it was read last, last month, this is the second reading.
Okay, questions at all? All right. I need a motion for the adoption of proposed changes to policy zero five point three one. Rental application and contract is presented at the second, is a second reading. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Bill Bradford, Certified Appeals Panel.
So we have a certified evaluation panel that is outlined in P R S, it was outlined in law. And one such component of that panel is a certified evaluation appeals panel. So this panel will be convened should a certified individual receive a rating of ineffective, which is the lowest performance rating on the majority of the teacher's standards. And so the expectation is for the school district to have a panel that is essentially on a call. In essence, they will be serving as a jury for the peers, to be able to reevaluate someone's evaluation should they be dissatisfied given those ineffective ratings. The panel is comprised of six individuals, three of whom are certified representatives, three of whom are certified alternative representatives. So my interest tonight is to present to you a slate of analysts who are willing and able to serve in these roles. They do represent all three levels of our schools, being from Highland High School, Highland Middle School, and then Woodville Elementary, as it relates to the certified representatives. And our alternatives also represent multiple levels, with elementary, high, and then a district-wide representation. We followed the process by which persons were able to self-nominate. And beyond the self-nominations, we were able to have individuals step forward and assume these positions should be approved again. I do not have data to present that this panel has convened in the last decade. So we do not have, it is not necessarily a group that comes together regularly. But of course, we want to be prepared to have there be a dismemberment.
So every year, you have new nominations?
I appreciate that, so we could divide the group. We're supposed to, I appreciate sharing that. The panel is to be put into place in five weeks, every five weeks. And so it is coming, creating a four-point one, so then we fire them.
And, I mean, the importance of having them is there are time limits in terms of the appeals evaluation and that whole system. So we have to have the, that group to come together quickly.
Like on a call, yes. And that's outlined in our evaluation plan as well, how a point of appeal or evaluation should be discussed.
Okay.
So this, this evening, this is a number one item.
Okay. I need a motion for the approval of certified evaluation appeals panel.
Does anyone have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. For staying up here for discussions, all right.
So my interest tonight is to share with you the next phase of the continuous district improvement planning, which is mirrored also at the school level. So each of the components I'm gonna share with you that are a part of the phase two tasks are also tasks that our school principals and assistants in schools have also been assuming. As well as I will make reference to several district-level personnel, also making sure they can do a few of these components. So the first of three tasks, there are three in total. The first of these three is an assessment. And so this proceeds our school improvement plans, our CSETs as we are familiar, as well as our comprehensive district improvement plan, the C D I, in the sense that our, we are responsible for identifying what our current state is and utilizing an array of qualitative and quantitative data to determine what is our current standing across all metrics. As you know, the, the specific areas that we look at in the comprehensive school improvement process are things such as academic achievement, so levels of academic proficiency in the core academic areas such as reading and math, as well as the separate academic indicators, that social studies, writing, and science include. We look at academic growth of all students, as well as the gaps that exist between student subgroup populations. We examine workplace conditions as a part of this process by evaluating stakeholder input and stakeholder feedback as it relates to the operations and leadership of our schools. And then at the secondary level in particular, we examine graduation rates as well as post-secondary readiness, which we are familiar with as being college and career readiness. And so as a district and as schools, we navigate ourselves through a process by which to evaluate our needs to determine where it is that we want to focus on in the future. So we will utilize data that was referenced earlier, that will include A P and A C T. We would also include data that is available related to students' mental health, perhaps, if it was an example. We will also use qualitative data as it relates to some of the feedback surveys that we receive from stakeholders as well. So each of those pieces gets put into place to evaluate what our current stat, state is. And that'll lead to the process of developing long-term goals, short-term objectives, strategies by which to meet those objectives, and then activities that'll help us to utilize those strategies. And so it will be very diluted in that component and very focused in a way that will promote continuous improvement. And then we will examine that over the course of the next twelve months because it's an annual plan that we evaluate and reevaluate on a consistent basis. The other piece in this phase is an assurance. So again, at the district level, as well, as well as at the school levels, we need to provide documentation to the state of Kentucky, to the Kentucky Department of Education, that we are utilizing funds in accordance to their expected utilizations. And I've referenced this before in an early presentation, but we receive funding from a variety of sources. And most notably, when that funding is federal in nature, there are very specific expectations by which those dollars are allocated. One such example is in the aforementioned K R P S R funds, which we know twenty percent are reserved for learning loss. And so there are rules like that that are applied to all of our funding mechanisms. And so as a school district, we have to technically, we have to literally assure that we'll be utilizing our funds in compliance with assurances. We do that for a diagnostic. We also do that with a report that is made to the Kentucky Department of Education for every pot of funds, that was not the term I was gonna use, for each allocation of funds that we receive across the entire campus. Finally, we also completed some part of this phase, the district safety report. And we also complete school safety reports. I want to be on record as acknowledging that my teammate, Amy Flaherty, is the one who completed this on behalf of the school district. I have the luxury of being the presenter, and then the schools were the ones that completed this on their part. And essentially, you are testing to the fact that you, A, have an emergency plan in place, that that, B, that that emergency plan has been vetted and has been- with that, B, that that emergency plan has been vetted and has been a part of a collaborative development process, and at C, the schools are attesting to the fact that there are regular rules as prescribed again in ARS statutes, that students are practicing in different emergency type situations. And so a part of the continuous improvement effort is to verify that we have those things in place so that if called upon, we have readiness mechanisms at that level. So those three components of the comprehensive district improvement process are what we are doing right now. Actually, technically, that ended on November 1st, and we are now moving forward to phase three, which is the improvement pro, the improvement plan development process, of which we will be consulting on with the schools next week, or council to council meeting. Any particular questions on the three, on our current status of district improvement?
No.
Well, then I will extend the academic achievement goal that we have as established in this plan to give you an update, my final update on Imagination Library. This is the dollar.
Pardon?
Imagination Library, to make sure we're all tied up on something. And so I have a report read tonight that indicates our current data, and I'll draw your attention to very specific things. So first of all, on the very upper left-hand side, you see registrations by Zepro. So obviously, our interest is looking at 4075, we're happy for all of Campbell County. And by the way, this is Campbell County very specifically. We are a part of a Campbell County countywide collaborative as it relates to the Imagination Library. This is not just available across the state to anybody who wants it currently, I'm getting to that point, but currently, we are part of a group of Campbell County school districts that have worked together to bring this resource into our community. And so as you know, from your previous approval, all student, excuse me, all children in Fort Thomas from birth to age five are receiving a monthly piece of literature and monthly reading text, a book, that is age appropriate and developmentally appropriate if they are registered in this program. So we have 589, this is as of November 1st, we have 589 tools, student children, registered for the Imagination Library, and it represents a proportion, obviously, or a percentage of the county at large. The other piece that I'll draw your attention to a couple of things, so registrations by door here, you see at the bottom left-hand side, so it shows you how many students entered into Imagination Library opportunity, given their year of birth. So 2021, you can kind of look to see as compared to 2020, about the date this was captured, about the date this data was captured, we have less of the birth rate, right, or at least less of registrations by birth rate for the county for 2021 as compared to 2020. You might be looking at graduations, the graduation data reflects those students who do turn age five. Once you do turn five within Campbell County and within Fort Thomas is our interest, you no longer receive your books of age out, you graduated from the Imagination Library program. I thought what you probably would be most interested in is what is our financial commitment and what has that been looking like? And so we share a proportion of the total costs amongst the county. So based upon the actual participants that we have representing Fort Thomas, we pay that proportional share. So on the upper right-hand side, you can see that Fort Thomas is responsible for about 10% of the total cost for what Campbell County as a county pays for this resource. And I haven't come back to this, but I thought you would appreciate more law numbers over the course of the last year. This is not fiscal year, this is literally 2021. So our most recent quarterly invoice was for around 1,700. Now I'd say that that's, you can notice, that's probably about our average, just slightly above $1,700 as it relates to a quarterly contribution. And this is for every child in Fort Thomas birth to age five to receive a free book every, every month. So it's through to the communities, we are investing in our community for the long term, but our community is benefiting from that investment at a rate so far in the year of about $5,282. So I expect that you will conclude the year 2021 paying a total of about, I guess, $6,100.
On the previous slide, it showed that the Campbell County Public Laboratory incurs half of the cost for.
That is correct. That is correct. They are a valued partner in this process, they assume the leadership of the endeavor. However, it is governed as a non-profit by a board, Fort Thomas is represented by its truly serving secretary, and so that is most certainly a shared effort in that regard. Another piece of information that you might appreciate, I don't know if you have a question, I'll have to come back to that, but there was a recent intel released by the Kentucky Department of Education, this was the initial release, that the Imagination Library, they are looking to expand it across the state, and the State Department is planning to utilize available funds to be able to make this more widespread across the state. So we have already inquired as to how perhaps Campbell County could benefit from additional fiscal resources to take the burden, although it's always a burden, but to take that burden off of the school district and off of our financial commitment and put more onto what the state is offering for the state at large. They do have a significant goal of recruiting at-risk students, so I know that that is most definitely where they are targeting their funds to support, but I believe that they are still conceptualizing the plan, reaching the majority of age eligible students across the state. So I'll keep you posted as to where, if that could be realized as it relates to our financial children.
That, that was, that, I, I knew it was in the news recently, but I couldn't remember exactly what it was about, so thank you.
Sure. So, I think we have, we have to understand additional libraries and capacity recently, so it's most appropriate to have a timely update.
Do we get a list of those kids that have gotten the books that?
We do, I guess, we have a common registration database available to us, a pull from the library, to be able to target those students and to target those that are not as well.
Yeah.
That's another strategic strategy.
And we looked at, we had an improvement in Berghans, the kindergarten readiness, and we were wondering if this was, so it'd be interesting to see, not that you all have a lot of time on your hands, but it'd be interesting to see if you could find the detail. And then the next thing that we talked about also, I would love to even go farther and maybe we have a summer program, you know, for these kids, when we do the, the summer enrichment program, to target some of those kids that were in that program, to bring them in, and then maybe even go farther into those books, I don't know, just. I loved it because it not only was age-appropriate books, but it taught the parents how to read to the children, you know, so it was a really cool program because we, that's the biggest determining factor on children's is reading.
Okay, the area exposure.
Yeah.
I will share with you, right before, I hate to use this, but in regards to right before the full pandemic, after the first year of implementation, the library did sponsor events for children who were engaged in the program.
Good.
And with parents in the library, and a graduation ceremony for that first year as well. It's just sort of been a little bit hijacked in the interim.
Right.
And therefore, they're, they're, students, we need to put that out.
Yeah. Good. Well, thank you. I know, love it.
Thanks, Brooke.
Okay, board committee updates, does anybody have an update of committees?
Well, we had a budget committee meeting today.
I know.
So that was good, we basically looked at the, where we are, what do we call it? We didn't call it working. I'm, I'm off on my phrasing. Working, okay, it is working, working budget, where we are through the basically first quarter, first few months, and so we're on track based on what we had talked about. So the, there'll actually be a presentation on the budget in January.
And then principals, I am going to reach out to you. The breakfast committee that we did at the beginning of the year, I have some donated money left, and so I'm going to reach out to you because I would like to feed the teachers at certain times, like if it works, the late arrival times, right before Thanksgiving and Christmas time and that sort of thing, so I'll be getting with you and figuring out how we can give some fun things to teachers, okay? You're welcome. Okay. The approval of the consent agenda. With all board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about the items contained therein, I need approval for the consent agenda. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to say?
Yep, we have fun festivities. Santa House is this weekend, so we encourage everyone to come out for a, for another great festival in, in an elementary school, the third in our trifecta there, so get out and support Santa House. Our final community conversation is at Johnson Elementary on November 16th. Again, it's an opportunity really just to, to have an informal meeting with, with district leaders and, and school leadership there. And also, we'll, we'll have some participation in our holiday walk on December 5th for, in connection with the community. So the central office will be open, the Highlands campus will be open, we hope to have some student performers there as well. Lots of fun festivities coming up.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all right, then we are adjourned. Thank you.